There you go. But that needs to be in the middle there, doesn't it?
Yeah, and I think that cord's stretched.
Wow, very soft one. Oh, that's so nice.
I didn't know my case dropped it off at work over here.
Beautiful. Yeah. You know when after Christmas you put them in a dark closet for months and months and they'll turn red and turn red.
The same thing happened to my children.
Your what, children? Well, I tried that a long time ago. I don't think that.
If you put them in a whiskey barrel with a hole so they can be eaten, probably. Three to twenty-five. They promised to come out adults, but I'm not.
I heard a pickle there.
Well, yeah, that probably be better. Save the whiskey for me, I don't drink, but I might start.
Jennifer Eldine.
And I appreciate that piece of information you provided. There's just a lot there. That'll be in that.
Is he videoing on who's signing in? Barbara.
How many weeks in the van she has to start that?
My son was in central Mexico, he said they were freezing him. Like covered patio. There was thousands of them.
Yeah, my, my, I ordered three for him. It came yesterday. Really, the first three, the best chapters of the first three or four. Then he gets into, into weeds on some other applications, which we didn't find as helpful as an organization.
Good afternoon, it is Tuesday, December fifteenth. All three commissioners are here in the commissioners' meeting room. Monica Reeves is doing the deputy clerk duties. Tricia Nielsen, who is the director of the DSD department for Canyon County, is here with us. Joining us by WebEx, we have Jennifer Almeida, who is the planner for Canyon County, and Anna, Anna Marie Eldine. Are you there?
I hope we're unmuted.
Okay, there you are, unmuted. Anna Marie?
Yes, here.
Do you wish, do you wish to speak?
Uh, my husband would.
And what's his name?
Charles.
Charles Eldine?
Yes.
Okay, we will, are you for or against?
Against.
Okay, and so, um, we'll swear you in when we, when Monica swears and the people that are here in person, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Barbara, is it Kitelinger?
Yes.
Are, uh, do you wish to speak?
Yes, please.
Are you for or against?
Against.
Okay. And next, we have Mark Cork. Do you wish to speak?
Doesn't look like Mark has audio yet.
Oh, okay. Marion Evans?
Yes.
Um, do you wish to speak?
Yes, please.
Okay, are you for or against?
I am in opposition to the plat.
Okay, very good, thank you. Um, there, Mark Cork. Are you there now?
I am, but I'm muted, I think.
No, we can hear you.
Okay, perfect.
Do you wish to speak?
Uh, no, not at this point. I might jump in in a little while.
Well, if you're gonna speak, we have to swear you in.
Okay, yeah.
So it's better, it's, it's better to get sworn in, and you just don't have to if you don't want to.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
For or against?
And, let's see.
Mark, for or against?
Zach Marble, is it? Zach Marble, are you there?
Uh, yes, I'm here.
Um, do you wish to speak in this, a public hearing?
Um, yeah, I guess go ahead and swear me in, I, we'll, we'll see.
Okay, okay, very good. Um, have I missed anyone, Monica?
You, you didn't ask Mark or Zach if they're for or against.
Oh, well, Mark, are you for or against?
I am against.
Thank you. Um, Zach, are you for or against?
Against as well.
Okay, very good. Okay, and I haven't missed anyone.
Nope, that was.
And, and here, we have wishing to speak, Fred DePold. Thank you. Um, Kent Brown. Jane Suggs. Okay, and, uh, Chad Collins. Okay, let's see, have I missed anyone? Uh, this must be Sean. But do you wish to speak?
No ma'am.
Okay. Okay, where did, where am I?
Tricia Nielsen, Jennifer Almeida, Fred DePold, Jane Suggs, Kent Brown, Chad Collins, Anna Marie Eldine, Charles Eldine, Barbara Kitelinger, Marion Evans, Mark Cork, and Zach Marble. Do you swear, or from the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so have you got?
Okay, um, it is Tuesday, December fifteenth, all three commissioners are here. Um, we are here for a public hearing, and this is a public hearing to consider a request by Jack's Place LLC and Jack's Place subdivision for a rezone and preliminary plat irrigation and dran, and drainage plan. The case numbers are, the rezone is RZ two zero two zero dash zero 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 four, and FD two zero two zero 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 six. So, um, at this time, Jennifer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, we do have some late exhibits for this case. I did send them over, um, earlier this morning. They are exhibits number seventy through seventy-three. Exhibit seventy is a letter from Lance Cornell. Exhibit seventy-one is a letter from Zach and Sarah Marble. Seventy-two is a letter from Terry and Carol White. And seventy-three is a letter from Monte and Melissa Schrelf.
Is it from Carol, Carol and Terry?
Uh, which number?
Carol and Terry White.
Number seventy-two, Madam Chair.
Seventy-two?
Yes.
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that. Um, so I will go through my presentation, uh, for both the rezone and subdivision, um, just for ease of reference, we'll go through them both. The subject property is approximately thirty-eight point four seven acres, located within Nampa's impact area. It is not located within a flood plain. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property from rural residential to R1 single-family residential, and also requested as a preliminary plat for Jack's Place subdivision. The subject property is designated as residential on Canyon County's future land use map, and a rezone would comply with that designation. The city of Nampa also designates the property as medium-density residential on their future land use plan. The surrounding area contains a mix of agriculture and residential uses as shown on the aerial photo, and that is exhibit five in your packet. Liberty Charter School is located south of the subject property. The primary zoning district within the vicinity is RR and agriculture, as shown on exhibit seven. There is R1 zoning located southeast of the subject property, uh, and I did, uh, point that out with the, the blue arrow, and you can see that in the darker yellow. Within one mile of the site, there are fifty-five platted subdivisions, for a total of one thousand and thirty-six lots. The platted lots have an average lot size of point seven zero acres. Castleton Place subdivision is located adjacent to the site, um, directly north of the subject property, and this development contains lots that range in size from thirteen thousand square feet to eighteen, eighteen thousand square feet, and majority of those lots are in the range of thirteen thousand to fourteen thousand square feet. The property has frontage on East Lewis Lane and Sunny Ridge Road, both of which are public roads. The property also has access to Castleton Avenue, which is located on the north boundary of the subject property. The applicant has gained approval of a variance from Nampa Highway District, and this variance granted an access onto East Lewis Lane, and that is exhibit fifty-nine in your packet. Traffic impact study was completed for the subdivision. The city of Nampa had reviewed the TIS, and no impacts or mitigation improvements were identified as part of their review. ITD also reviewed the TIS, uh, to, and found it to be acceptable. Idaho Transportation Department did recommend, in their comment letter, a northbound right turn lane to be oriented at the intersection of Lewis Lane and Highway forty-five. However, it is, um, worth noting that the county does not currently have any sort of inter-agency agreement in which to hold those funds. Domestic water and sanitary sewer will be provided by the city of Nampa, um, and in Canyon County code, uh, our ordinance does allow parcels that are located within an impact area, uh, that utilize city sewer and water services. Those lots are allowed to be reduced to squ, twelve thousand square feet. The applicant is proposing eighty-nine residential lots, and those lots have an average lot size of twelve thousand three hundred and ninety-seven square feet, and that, that is compliant with Canyon County code. Pressurized irrigation will be provided to each residential lot, that is plat note number ten. Storm drainage will be collected and retained on site. The city of Nampa will require a final drainage plan and report to be submitted with the final plat for this project, and the drainage plan must be in conformance with the city of Nampa drainage policy. Keller and Associates had reviewed the plat and found it, that it conforms with Canyon County code. Their comments are found in exhibit four of the subdivision staff report. Um, they did provide some conditions that were recommended, uh, staff did add those also as recommended conditions of approval in the proposed findings for the project, found in exhibit one. Nampa School District provided comments indicated that the only capacity concerns at this point would be for Lake Ridge Elementary. An adjustment to school boundaries may be needed, but is dependent on the number of elementary students within the subdivision. The district also encouraged the use of sidewalks and appropriate lighting for the safety of students that are walking to school or bus stops. Boise Project Board of Control did indicate that the South Roberts, Robinson lateral lies in the northwest corner of the subject property, and they did note that their easement is twenty-five feet east and south, and twenty-five feet west and north of the center line of this canal. Compass has reviewed the application and found that the proposal did not exceed the forecast for the area. Planning and zoning commission did hear this case and recommended approval of both the rezone and preliminary plat. Staff has also found that the request to rezone to R1 is consistent with the Canyon County zoning ordinance, future land use plan and map. The request is also consistent with the city of Nampa's plans for the area. Staff is recommending approval as outlined in exhibit one of the staff report for both the rezone and the preliminary plat for this project. And that concludes my summary, and I will stand for questions.
Tom?
Uh, Madam Chair. That's fine, Tom, Tom's my name, been that way for seventy years. Last is Tommy first. Um, uh, Jennifer, could you identify where the city dilemmas of Napa lie on? I, I was looking for that, and I, maybe I'm just missing it, but.
One point two five miles.
One point two five miles?
Correct.
So that's, so, so, by the way, that's my question, 'cause I know, uh, it is possible to, to sign up for city water and sewer. I think that Napa still has the same policy that you pay double for those when you're not within the city limits, is that, I think that's correct, so. Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's the only question I had on that, I'll reserve any comments later on.
Mr. Van P. Yes, and I'm gonna jump to the plat on this, so it's note nine on the plat, fire protection will be engineered to the guidelines of the city of Nampa Fire District, and I know that, that puts some of the burden back on the city of Nampa, but I wanna make sure that until the issues with the fire district have been resolved, that we don't place things on a plat that inadvertently put a measure of performance there that, that county currently does not have on the books and cannot enforce.
So, uh, Madam Chair, if I could address that just briefly, when they're on city water, there will be fire hydrants, uh, powered by city water system, so the fire, the fire flow would not be an issue here.
Thank you, Commissioner Dale.
That's correct.
Appreciate that.
Anything else for Jennifer at this time? So, um, I, uh, Kent, are you going first as the applicant? Okay, please, I'm naming address.
So, both Jane and I are gonna do part of the presentation, if that's all right?
Okay, if you, that'll be fine.
So I'll start, be real brief, and then she gets into the meat, so.
Okay, so she'll have to, so she'll, and don't look that snowy, okay?
Okay. So, for the record, my, my address is thirty-one sixty-one East Springwood, Brady, in Idaho. Um, when we picked this site, part of the, the reason is, is that there's a water or there's a sewer line that runs through this piece of property, so it's to feed the development to the south. Um, we looked at the surrounding developments and looked at those, and then started our design. With our design, we picked up on certain things that we weren't seeing there, uh, tree-lined streets, um, a landscape buffer to protect against, uh, Lewis and against, uh, Sunny Ridge, and trying to create a means for people to, to have that environment. If you look at our neighbors to the west, some of them have gone out and tried to put trees, and they've tried to buffer their, their homes. We're going in and putting that in to begin with. And then, there was a discussion, I had two neighborhood meetings with the neighbors, and they're very passionate about where they live, and they like, they like what they have, and their concern was that we, you know, do something nice, and, and we appreciate that, i- in the fact that we think that we've stepped up from that. By having tree-lined streets, they talked about people driving through their existing neighborhoods, that's, and well, those are their neighbors. When you look at their houses, they have a tashwalk, and then they start the landscaping somewhere closer to their home. By us doing the tree-lined streets, we're gonna have to, that, that vision, and, and I think, uh, Nampa's had this for, for some period of time, of having that detached walk with a tree-lined street. It makes your visual impact a lot different. That street, even though the asphalt's the same width as the other, when you are looking at it and you have trees on either side, it makes it so it doesn't look like a freeway. If you don't have anything there and you start your landscaping against the street, it, it does make you have a feeling that you can go faster. Um, we've tried to address all of the issues as we've gone through the development, uh, Nampa wanted traffic calming, we've pu, put two chokers in that are acceptable to the city of Nampa and, and calming traffic. Um, where we saw that Castleton to the north of us, they had that Robinson lateral, they included that into those lots. We've kept that as a common area space, so that area isn't being a part of that lot. And we've tried to do those kind of things to maximize what the people do get in the end is for their, their homes. We, we want to be as nicer, nicer than our neighbors that are next to us, just on a different lot size, and, go ahead, Jane.
Oh, okay. Thank you, commissioners, good afternoon. Jane Suggs with Gem State Planning, I've been working with Kent. Um, I think we've just continued since that neighborhood meeting to make, um, Jack's Place a much special, a very special, uh, community to live in. Um, first, I wanna show you, of course, you're looking at the landscape rendering now, um, Jennifer, if you'll go to the next slide, please. This is, um, some information we received from the Nampa Fire District, uh, Department now. Um, they're approving the two accesses on Lewis and Sunny Ridge, and especially like the secondary access that comes to connect to Castleton Place. As it turns out, Castleton Place subdivision has more homes with a single access than is actually allowable by the current code, so the fire department really likes having the possibility. And I was doing some research on Ruth, which is on the north side of Castleton, and it looks like the Nampa Fire, um, Nampa Highway District's gonna be doing some remo, reconstruction of Ruth in a couple of years, and so this extra access would be very beneficial to the Castleton residents as well. Um, and of course, it's already mentioned that Nampa Highway District has already approved our access to Lewis Lane, so we've already satisfied one of the conditions of approval. Um, the next slide. Again, um, one of the things that was a concern to the Castleton residents was that we were connecting to them, and of course, there are some requirements in their CCNRs that do say that they expect that development would attach to Castleton, um, Drive, and that there would be, uh, new development to the south, so that is part of the Castleton CCNRs, so they would expect that to happen. Another slide, please. Again, this is showing part of that plat, it shows there was a little foot strip there right at the ex, exit of Castleton on the south side, and that lot will remain as a non-built lot until there is construction, so there was a future plan for this property to be developed. Next slide, please. Um, many of our neighbors were pretty concerned about the sizes of the homes, um, and we will be, um, uh, requiring in our CCNRs that the minimum twenty-one hundred square feet for a, a single-story home, twenty-five hundred square feet for a two-story house, so that was a concern about that we would put some tiny homes on these pretty good-sized lots. All the homes will have a minimum, of course, of a two-car garage. Um, twenty percent of the home frontage will be rock, rock, brick, or stone, of course, no vinyl siding, and thirty-year architectural shingle, shingles. We are also, um, gonna have landscaping in the front yards. These are outside of the planting strip, that would include a six-foot-tall conifer, a deciduous tree of two-inch caliber or greater, ten five-gallon shrubs, ten two-gallon plants, and five two-gallon shrubs, and I got all of this because I went to Castleton, and I went to Table Meadows, and I looked at their requirements in their CCNRs, and we exceeded those requirements, so that's why we're doing this, we really want this to be a special place. If you look at this slide now, we're looking at one of the features, detached sidewalk with the landscaping that's located in the planting strip, and you'll notice on this one, we actually have one of the chokers, one of the bulbouts, which actually can be used to slow traffic, so just like Kent was talking about, when you see these trees and you see that curb coming out, you're not going to use this street as a raceway. Um, there are a couple of more slides showing, um, what this, this is actually modeled after the homes and the lan, and the landscape plan that we have provided. We've done this modeling, computer modeling based on our, this project. So here it shows, um, people enjoying that sidewalk in the planting strip, so you're not right up against the, the curb. There's another slide, please, there we go, just more opportunity to show some of the houses, and it's a nice street scape that this actually creates. One more slide, please, and we have some home examples. Um, I believe some of the neighbors have expressed concerns about the home builder, and the property right now is owned by Jack's Place LLC, which is Stephen McConnell Trust. Um, the property is being developed by Trilogy. Um, if the project is approved, Trilogy will then determine who will be the home builders. Um, Trilogy has actually worked with several builders, Presidio Homes, Biltmore Homes, CBA Homes, and Todd Campbell Homes, so those are all possibilities of home builders in this subdivision. The building team has not been chosen at this time. And there are a few examples, there's another example of homes. Let's see, where we have some two and three, um, car garages there. Once again, we're happy to report that Jack's Place meets all the requirements of both Canyon County and the city of Nampa, and we agree with all the conditions of approval in the staff report. Um, we're excited about Jack's Place, um, we think it's gonna be a wonderful addition in Canyon County, and we respectfully request your approval of our rezone to R1 and our preliminary plat, our irrigation and drainage, and we can ask questions.
So these are, these are twelve thousand-plus-foot lots?
Yes, ma'am.
That is.
Yes.
I have a question that's pretty immaterial, but why, why the name Jack's Place? Where did that come from?
Part of it was the original owner, um, was Jack's Place, and then, we put all the street names, uh, there's, uh, wildlife areas in the south, and the light use of Jack's Canyon, so we added all of those names, uh, from canyons and peaks that are in that area.
Nothing to do with Jack's Impact?
No, it doesn't have anything to do, but that is also one of the places that is named Jack's Place.
Right, okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
I have a question, so I've heard you say that the developer for this property has not been named yet, and you gave a list of possible builders in that, and a couple of them I recognize, typically into the starter home with pre-measured, um, waste on the product, and so, you know, if you're looking out, and we're right on the edge of that ag ground out there, what I read in here is that people aren't necessarily opposed, I understand that's in an area of impact, it's connected to city services, but by increasing a lot size and lowering the number of homes to be more commensurate with what's already there, um, we get a lot of requests here, so we try to make it fit in with the area, and some suggestion would be just to increase that lot size to meet some of the minimums there, which, that would be away from letter after letter that I read, can you address that?
I'd be happy to, the, a, a good example is along our northerly boundary, um, the, the lot difference between our neighbors and us is we're, we're in like ninety-four to ninety-three feet wide. The lot depth is exactly the same as those that are in Castleton to the north of us, their lot width is a hundred feet. So, what we're talking about is two passes of my wife's lawnmower, 'cause my wife owns a lawn, uh, uh, but, difference, and yet the setbacks and everything else is the same, and it really doesn't add that extra value. They, I think, are of the opinion that there's acre and three-quarter acre lots that are to the west of us, that were done prior to the, this being twenty years ago, put into Napa's impact area. Your code calls out that you have to determine the lot size generally because of the ability to provide water and sewer. If you have a septic tank and you have a, a well, then you need a larger piece of property to do that. There, there isn't any extra value that is given to it because of the lot size. It's interesting, in Castleton, some of the smaller lots have some of the bigger houses that, that are on them, and I guess that's why I said that these, these people are really passionate, is that they want it to be as nice, and we, we do too. We, we, by then putting the square footage requirement, we, we want to put in our CCNRs and our restrictions, something that even exceeds what they've done.
And so, will there be allowance for custom home builders to come in, and I think that's one of the things too, where they're more rural, that the, the dollar amount that I saw, and there was four hundred and fifty to maybe six hundred and fifty thousand, so if you get what I call a cookie cutter home, you're limited on design, you're limited on space, it, it. It would be maybe more inconsistent with the area, and they're trying to find a way to close that gap.
So in the two neighborhood meetings that I had with the neighbors, one of their biggest concerns is that Trilogy does do a lot of work for CDH Homes. CDH Homes has some upper-end products that they are doing in Napa or in Eagle. And they do do a bigger home. We haven't made the determination of who the builder is today. To protect those neighbors and their concerns, we've made it so that those house sizes have to exceed what's in their existing neighborhoods that they're in. And then with the landscaping and everything else, it's... We don't know who those builders are. In the slides, we did show you Trisidio and some others that do houses. They do a custom home. Because I sent out the neighborhood notice, I got probably calls from every builder that built in Castleton and Table Meadows. We just haven't picked a builder yet because we don't know what the... I mean, how can we even talk about what the lot cost is until we know what the approval was? And so we're, we're not...
I have another question. So if we look at new products that are being offered throughout the county, there's a development going in on Midland Road between Eustick and Cherry, I think it is. It's Brighton Home. It's really kind of the first of its kind. I know one of the construction workers in there. But it just looks very different than what we've had. I'm not saying it's necessarily bad. But the thing that's appealing about it, they've gone up instead of out, so that you could probably hop house top to house top. But there's a variety of design, color, there's landscaping, there's different things in there that make it not look like subsidized housing. And so I, I guess I'm...
And back to that particular development, that one that Brighton's doing is in the city of Caldwell. And it has landscape buffers. They put their smaller homes in the, in the center of the development. That's the ones I, is doing what I do, I go to a lot of hearings and hear about a lot of projects and hearing the neighbors talk. And their concern was about the smaller product that they were putting on, in that development. Well, they were smaller, narrower houses trying to reach a different market. We're looking at something that is bigger than anything that is in that development totally. But what they were also talking about is that they had enhanced landscaping, that they had tree-lined streets. That was kind of the, kind of the caveat that they were talking about with the city of Caldwell, was that we're going to make it look really nice. We're going to make it look nicer than what you usually see in the city of Caldwell with regards to a tree-lined street. That's, that was Brighton's MO, if you will.
And I appreciate your feedback on that. One more thing for comparison. The city of Middleton is experiencing a lot of growth in their area of impact, and especially around the high school there. So some of those Coleman Home developments, they're three houses to the acre. They also do not look like cookie cutter homes. They're, it's more custom colored with some landscaping things in there. So I think to allow people to hear what the intent is, there's a lot of fear of the unknown. And when you buy rural and you want to maintain that and make it consistent and have orderly growth that fits in, I'm interested in that too, because, because this comes before the board, we do get a say in what that looks like and represent the people that send in the information. There was a lot.
There was. I mean, and there was me and 75 new friends. At two different meetings and, and then phone calls afterwards. And I think that if there is a concern, then that's not something that we've talked about putting in the CCNRs, but that we don't duplicate that same house. Now, many of the custom homes, even though they're custom homes, it's what, you know, the custom home builder has two or three different ones, and they, they like it, they change the color a little bit. And so there, there is duplicates, if you will, in the neighborhood. Obviously, I mean, we can put that in our CCNRs, but we do want this to look very nice.
Thank you for your feedback.
You're requesting the R1?
Yes, ma'am.
How many one-acre lots are in this, going to be in this?
There's one large, larger lot that's in our northeast corner. And there, but we don't have any one-acre lots.
Okay. What is the largest, what's the largest size lot?
It's 14,000 something.
Okay, okay.
We're a half-acre lot size, basically.
Okay.
I'm sorry, there's one that's 20,000.
That would be the corner, that's that corner?
That's the northeast corner.
I think that is, that is the biggest block.
I think now, we, I read the same letters, and it's kind of interesting, Mr. Brown, because it, a lot of them were their, the density. It just, I mean, like, it's an R1, which is the minimum acre, it was one acre, right? Trish, she's going to interrupt me.
It was on well and septic, it was an acre.
Okay.
But our ordinance provides a 12,000-square-foot lot, it's giving water and sewer.
So your average lot, okay.
You're within the ordinance.
Thank you. So the average size of your lot, then, let's ask it that way. What is the average of the lots you're proposing?
Just over 12,000 square feet, so 12,300 and a half acres.
That, that was in Jennifer's report. She was getting...
Okay.
Minimum, minimum eight, 12,000, some larger.
Okay, okay. But they, and they were all, most, all of the people in the letters, they know that the growth is coming, they know that people are moving here by the trainloads and everything. But it's just that, you know, some of them, they've got two acres or one acre or even three-fourths of an acre, that they just have the, they have a more open feeling to their subdivision. So I've been down through there, and the people that are in Fuji and all...
He's a great example, because they went in prior to the area of impact. They have no sidewalks in there.
No fences, hardly.
Hardly any fences. They go anywhere from like three-quarters of an acre up to, I think there's one that's quite large and is over a million dollars. Someone brought that up in one of the neighborhood meetings. The property that's to the east of us, they're all on five-acre parcels. And they don't have sidewalk or anything on their property. The closest homes that are adjacent to it is Castleton, that's to the north. And their lot sizes are a little bit bigger. They're, as I discussed earlier. But then also, they don't, they don't have that landscaping that we're providing along the streets, which is almost four acres of land that we're putting outside in street buffers and in that landscaped area that is a part of that, that makes this different. And that's not inside those lots. The Robinson Lateral that's along our northwest corner that kind of takes that little curve portion out. The lots that are adjacent to us, there's a maintenance road that's on there. Those, that's within those people's lots. It's not within our lots. We've kept that out of the area that we're counting. I mean, we could have minorly fudged those lots into that area. It would be allowed. It would be really similar to what our neighbors are doing. But it's not usable ground, and why burden someone with this area when it's easier to fence it off? Let the ditch company have their easement, but also just deal with the homeowners association. We have to clean up along the fence or do something like that. But that's the right thing to do, that we've tried to do.
Commissioner Van B, I don't see.
Yeah, I'm sure. I think I understand what's going on here, and I understand what the, what the goal is here. I, I've got some comments that I think are more appropriate for, after we hear the public comments and we get into the discussion up here amongst the board. But I, I think I understand what you're trying to do there. And what, I'll just, I'll just make this one comment. You know, we talk about lot sizes and all that kind of stuff. And one of the values we hear regularly from folks is, is we need to be preserving farm ground. Ag ground is disappearing at an alarming rate. Well, by utilizing city services and, and going to a 12,000-square-foot lot rather than a one-acre lot, you're maximizing the use of that land. It does create more density, but it does help preserve farmland, so that it doesn't need to be gobbled up quite as quickly. Anyway, that's just a value I was brought up. But anything else I'd say, it should be reserved until after our public comment is over.
I'm sure.
Yes.
Thank you. I do have some questions that I think specifically I want to address before we have you at the table. So I'm going to refer to Exhibit 20. It's a letter from Flip and Sandy Cohen. And I think that we're on the track to getting some of the questions answered. So their concern, the amount of homes on 37 acres, that's a lot size per home of .27. And if I read the information the staff report correctly, it would be 2.3 homes per acre. So that's less than three, so the minimum lot size would have to be .33, if that were true. Is that...
I believe you might be talking about road density versus the net density.
Okay.
So that might be the calculation that you come up with, if you take all of the acreage and the lot number of lots. So you, and of course, much of that is roadway, landscaping, buffers, common lots, drainage lots. So that is why that's...
So I appreciate your clarification. So the .27 is acreage. And it's taking into account that we have those 10 common lots plus roads, is what I heard you say. Okay. And then another concern, the proposed square footage of homes. What I heard you say was that your minimum lot or square footage on the single was 2,100, 2,500 on a two-story, a source of portable water, and that should not affect their wells because they're on city services. I can do nothing about the pet population. Higher density does probably tend to attract more children in a home. Again, we don't control that. And then the quality of homes, that's what we're discussing. And I hear a willingness for you to put some restrictions in the CCNRs for making these look appealing with a stone requirement, a square footage requirement. You're willing to put something in there so they don't all look like carbon copies, that they have some design and variance. Okay, appreciate that. And then home values, and that really, as I've spoken with the realtor, he said a lot of what's going to happen is going to be dependent on the way that the CCNRs are written and what you attract in that development. So thank you for just answering those. I'm going to jump to Exhibit 41, which is Stephen. There was a proposal, what this says, they begged the developer to lower the number of lots by seven. And the proposal was to have a minimum square footage that was, I think, this Castle Place Peak subdivision, so 13,000. So address what that would look like if you lowered it by seven lots? And whether that's the pros and cons of that, what that would look like?
A number of the discussion was that if we added a little bit of extra room, that there would be added value to, to that because of that added ground that's added to it. We have the similar backyard distances, which is where people are actually living. They're not, we have the same setbacks that is in the other. And so having just a little bit more width in the lot is generally what it ends up coming down to, doesn't add a value to the property that increases it. So it wasn't, what we viewed in what we were doing, accomplishing what they were, were hoping for, is that they view that that thousand-square-foot difference between us and, let's say, Castleton is going to add greater value in that, and it, and it isn't what the... Sorry about that. I thought I put this on. It, it isn't going to increase that value. And I think in the long term, it wasn't that it was an increased density of seven more lots. It was, it comes down to the value that's in the home and in the property. And our goal is to be as nice or nicer than anything that's there, and we really strive to do.
And you talk also on the first point, the egress from the development that aligns with the school directly across from it. So talk about the traffic impact of that, or that subdivision.
So you can see that on our southerly boundary. We have that access weight there. The sewer runs up our very westerly boundary. Or easterly boundary. So the existing sewer runs right through here right now, then comes, and then comes over here to Table Meadows and the school. It comes down this way. We put two chokers in here, one at the rear end there. And then this entrance is the one that the Napa Highway District has already approved. So we've already received approval for that. And so that it's not a straight shot, we moved it over. There was discussion about even going further, but this was acceptable to the Highway District. It doesn't get too close to this road, and it doesn't get too close to any of the other shops.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything more right now? Okay. Fred, you called? Yes.
Do we leave here?
Thank you.
Name and address, please.
Hi, Frank Decole, 5680 East Franklin, Napa. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm in favor of this project. I think it is going to be an addition to the neighborhood. Here are the conversations you guys are having. And if you really want to compare lot sizes and you consider that the Castleton sub to our north includes, I know this was mentioned, but I want to emphasize it, they include the irrigation easement in their lot sizes. You're probably going to have to back out 5,000 square foot for some of those lots. So it's almost the same. It really is. And then when you add in the almost four acres of sidewalks and grassy strips, it really exceeds. It really does. To me, this feels like an infill property. It already has city sewer running through the middle of it and water. It's already there. It's not like they're needing to bring it. And then I see that the County Board of Commissioners adopted this particular property into the Napa area of impact in April 14th of 2000. And at that time, it was slated for medium density, which is far greater density than what is being proposed. I think that's up to 80 units per acre. But what I wanted to talk about and share a little bit is the safety aspect. I feel that these 14,674 feet of sidewalk, that's 2.8 miles of sidewalk. This five-foot sidewalk is a, is a treasure to that community. You've got two schools across the street. You've got one just down the road. And, you know, people are going to be out there walking those, you know? There, it's a, it really gives a family-friendly feeling. When I look at those pictures that they showed earlier, you know, with the, you know, the sidewalk back and people walking by, I can just see the families walking there, and it's going to be a real treasure to the, to the community. It's going to be a great benefit to the neighborhood. Also, and this was mentioned earlier, the fire marshal did comment, and I'm sure this letter's in your packet, that Castleton currently is exceeding, you know, the safety guideline or the number of units on the single-access road. And so I think they were a little bit excited and in favor of this connection. And then, you know, one thing I just got, I just got to comment on is, you know, I'm in, I'm in real estate, and so I go to a few of these meetings. They're watching them online. And there's a, there's a common occurrence that I see going on in all the cities and here as well. And that is a... Is that my time?
Yeah, you can just rest.
I have 15 seconds. But there's a disconnect from the people to the, you know, the process. It's almost like, you know, they, they don't know about the comprehensive plan. What was slated for this property? What was the plan? Then, you know, they want to come in and rewrite what that plan is. And this... Then they, you know, they wanna come in and rewrite what that plan is, and this project fits perfectly within that plan. And so there's a disconnect, people don't understand what the comprehensive plans say, and then they, they see an application, and they come in and wanna rewrite that comprehensive plan. So I wish there was some way to educate the people on it thoroughly. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yeah, I have two questions. Number one, who do you represent? Are you a Realtor, or what's your...
I am a Realtor, yes, I'm with Silver Creek Realty.
Okay, and then you live in Napa?
Yes, my, my business address is fifty-six eighty Napa.
And do you live within the area of impact for this neighborhood?
I do not.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. So that takes care of that. So, um, Chad Collins, name and address, please.
Thank you very much. Chad Collins, nine-eight-six-eight Falls Point Way. I start every conversation the same way. I'm not opposed to development. I live in a rural area, I live in Table Meadows, and if it wasn't for, you know, continued developmental growth, I, I wouldn't be able to afford the, the luxuries that I have in the home that I have. The struggles that I have with this particular development is, one, the lot size, it's not commensurate to any of the neighboring, even connecting through to Castleton, um, you know, sharing that same road is, is, you know, seven feet different width, it, it's not a matter of seven foot different width. It's not a matter of the size of the homes, you know, you can have large homes on small lots, you can have tiny homes on big lots, it's about the quality of the environment that we live in. Time into Castleton subdivision, their CCNRs has a very interesting clause in it, in that that sub-road is designed for an extension of the Castleton subdivision. That's, that's an agreement that everybody that bought into that subdivision, I believe, bought into expecting if it is an extension of that subdivision, it would be an extension of the same subdivision, not a new development with different rules, different sizes, um, different policies. The traffic impact is another one in which I'm, I'm greatly concerned. Development should pay for development, and, and not putting the burden on taxpayers down the road. It, it should be timely in which the development is implemented, not wait until there's a problem and try to fix it, which is recognized that traffic studies ITD has highlighted, there would be a benefit, but because there's no inter-agency agreement, we're just gonna put the burden on the taxpayers down the road. That's, that's a concern for me, particularly living in the area and having to commute on that Lewis Lane. With, with that, I mean, those are my two main points. Um, you know, certainly a lot has already been shared with the, the numerous letters from the community and, and those people that would care to speak after me, so I will do the rest of my time. Any questions?
Thank you.
I'm sure.
No question.
I have a question. I'm gonna reference Exhibit thirty-seven, so what I heard you say, Lance Thewerson was the developer on Castleton, is that right?
Uh, I...
Okay, I'm seeing some acknowledgement back there. So this is from Hugo Parenti, a letter, and so the developer, Lance Thewerson, was informative about the future adjacent to the existing subdivision, reviewing the CCNRs and verbal conversations with the several homeowners, we felt comfortable about using their savings to go purchase in this area. So my question then is, did Mr. Thewerson own the ground that was south of this that would have been a continuation of the Castleton development? So then I had, you know, I'm seeing that there's a no on that, and so I, in the absence of an agreement that would solidify the argument to have that be an extension or a continuation, I have to use information that's been given to me, and, um, I am compassionate to the rural feelings. And then the traffic impact, there's a lot of comments about traffic. I happen to agree with you, I just don't happen to have that in my, um, things that we can do as commissioners, that's really outside of our purview to manage, and, but I don't disagree with you that there are traffic needs that need to be addressed. Our developer, our Director for Development Services spends a lot of time with planning, and they will be able to talk to that if you wanted to weigh in and comment. As commissioners, you get to make decisions based on the findings and facts for the questions that are presented, so. And the traffic impact where Napa Highway District was, was a recommendation, uh, one of the things that I would like to ask, in the staff report, it was said that there's a suggestion of a right turn lane, but nothing to, um, no, no teeth there to get the developer to put that in. So that's a question, I guess, I would like to have answered, what the willingness is on that, but, um, I wanted to fair it out because I read that on the development for Castleton when that extended, so I appreciate your testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Van Beek. If, if I can clarify though, that the CCNRs for Castleton do specify that it is only for an extension of Castleton subdivision.
Okay.
So it is in their CCNRs, it's documented fact.
Okay, I see that here, and I, thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, Charles Aldean?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, we can hear you.
No, I've, I've heard, uh, lots of things about how great the subdivision's gonna be, we live on Lewis Lane, and, and how they're gonna slow the traffic, and I'm, I'm real curious about what they're gonna do with another hundred and sixty cars going down Lewis Lane. The traffic's gonna be bent up from Highway forty-five clear to the school, and slowing traffic, people go by here a hundred miles an hour, and the only way you're gonna slow traffic is put a police station down here on Lewis Lane. This is ridiculous the way the cars are going. And like I said, with another hundred and sixty cars, nobody's gonna be able to get up on Highway forty-five, period. And I'll just stand it there.
Okay.
Well, that, and, I have one more thing. That and the kids from the school, uh, people that go to the school and pick the kids up, and that's what starts on the street, some of them do, because there's no place for them to get in to pick their children up. And these kids run on the street out here, and somebody's gonna get killed, and that's the only way that I would put it.
I hope not. Thank you, Mr. Aldean. Um, let's see. Barbara Kitelinger?
Yes.
Please.
Uh, I live at fifty-twenty-six Torrington Place in Napa. It's in the Castleton, Castleton subdivision, and I'd just like to say, I'm not opposed to the development. I mean, everyone is entitled to develop whatever they want. My concern is the extension of Castleton into that subdivision, 'cause it was stated at the planning commission meeting, planning and zoning, that Jack's Place is not an extension of Castleton, and as it was pointed out in our CCNRs, that was to be extended on the extension of the Castleton Place subdivision. Um, and I mean, even if you look at the plat map, Castleton extending all the way through is like a main thoroughfare, and that will increase traffic through this subdivision as potentially. And I know that there are several families that live on Castleton with small children, and that's a concern. Uh, their traffic calming devices are only in, within the Jack's Place subdivision, not in Castleton, and that's a big concern for the residents of Castleton.
Thank you very much. Anything, anything more?
Nope.
Okay.
I'm sure, we'll turn.
Yes.
Barbara.
Barbara?
Barbara.
Kitelinger?
Okay.
Kite, excuse me, Kitelinger, yes.
I have a question, given that there's been another question raised about the lot size. So Jennifer, have you, or can you investigate what the net lot size is? There's, we're talking about either gross or net, depending on the roads and the common lots. Do we know what the net lot size is for Castleton?
Commissioner Van Beek, um, I believe there is a notation on page one of the plat for the average, um, buildable lot as twelve thousand three hundred ninety-seventh square feet, and I do believe that that does exclude the roads, uh, drainage lots, common lots, um, and is strictly the average for the residential.
Okay, and that's for Jack's Place?
Correct.
What about for Castleton? Do we have information on that development?
Um, I just have the average. Commissioner Van Beek, I can investigate a little bit further here at my desk and see and verify that that's just the residential and doesn't include the common lots. So I can do that, and, and, uh, after rebuttal, I can get that answer for you.
I really appreciate that, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question for Trish. Trish, can you talk, uh, to the CCNRs that would promise future, or, you know, people that purchase in Castleton? How does that work where they're, they wrote CCNRs, and in good faith, people bought that, and then that's coming up short?
CCNRs are private agreements, so that would be a civil issue among the homeowners, because reach of the CCNRs, the county doesn't have a role in it, of course.
Right. Okay, so totally outside the scope or purview, anything that the board approved, not, not anything we're able to manage or address?
Right.
Okay.
Totally private agreement.
I appreciate you putting that on record, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything more?
No, I'm...
Mar- Marion Evans?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. I, uh, Marion Evans, five-two-one-zero Craig Lane. I abut the proposed development immediately to the east. I have sent numerous letters, but my primary concerns are that the lot size, while they are lovely homes and everything looks great, they are not commensurate with the surrounding comparison of about three-quarters of an acre or seven-tenths of an acre, I guess it is. And I'm also very concerned, he continues to maintain that, um, everything is to the Napa City code, this property is not in the city, it is in the county, and I am afraid that any mitigation or improvements are gonna be the burden of we, the Canyon County taxpayers. To that extent, traffic, uh, their traffic report, I think, is a little bit disingenuous where they state that they think there will be approximately sixty-six morning peak hour trips and eighty-eight evening peak hour trips. Uh, most families I know are both working, and they generally have a kid with a car as well, so I would assume that would be closer to, let's say, a hundred and seventy morning and evening trips, and who knows with the kids. The Fire Marshal did state that it is within the Fire Marshal's, um, or within the Canyon County plan, but he also indicated that it's going to be increasing the time of response. Their average desire is five minutes, and this development would have an approximate response time of six minutes. One minute doesn't seem much unless you're having a stroke or a heart attack, and that, um, we would have to increase our fire department personnel, which again, I know that's a concern right now with our fire districts. And finally, I am concerned about the irrigation. I and my neighbors here on the east side get water from that ground. It is their wastewater runoff that comes to the, their east side, my west side drainage ditch, that, uh, partially irrigates some of my property, and I have seen no accommodations for that other than they're going to have pressurized irrigation. My assumption is they're gonna do away with any internal irrigation ditches, despite the fact that the irrigation company said that all existing ditches should be maintained. And finally, my concern is the open space, there isn't much, and we are right up against the Deer Flat Wildlife Refuge, and this is an area that a lot of wildlife use. That's my input.
Very good. Thank you very much. Thank you. Um, Zach Marble?
Zach sent a message that he needed to, um, to another appointment. He has a message there on chat, says I'm going to have to head out early due to another engagement. My comments are that this proposal has eighty-nine lots, a similar land area to the north, including Castleton, Coventry Place, have a total of fifty-seven homes. Thirty-two more homes are going in this section of land. I get that this is going to be developed at some point, but the density, in my opinion, needs to be lessened dramatically. Then went on to state, additionally, we already have cars screaming down Sunny Ridge as is, and Lewis does not have a stoplight. It will be the two main points of entry for the subdivision, and it will be a mess.
Okay. That answered, actually, one of my questions, 'cause one of my questions was, is there a light at Lewis?
Well, for Lewis and Sunny Ridge.
Lewis and, um, forty-five, is there a light there though?
I don't think so. There's no stoplight on the street light here.
Okay.
Commissioner, just a placeholder for Jennifer, while we're looking for the net lot size in Castleton, so if you could also provide the amount of acres that that subdivision was built on, that would be another question I had, thank you.
Mark?
It looks like Mark has dropped off, but there's a new person who joined, Lance Cornell.
Oh, Lance Cornell? You wish to speak? Are you there, Mr. Cornell? Um, okay, if, um, I had, I think that's all with the webex one, and, and Mr. Cornell, I don't know if he's having trouble with the sound, or if he doesn't wish to speak. So, um, yeah, he, um, at this time, then, before we, um, that's, I have no one else signed up to speak, so we'll turn it back to, uh, Mr. Brown to, to, um, answer. There were some questions and comments in here, and so hopefully you can provide some information.
Uh, for the record, Kent Brown, thirty-one, sixty-one, East Springwood. Um, a, a, a number of them had, um, traffic comments, and one had the comment about ITD. Uh, ITD is making comments on almost every development application that's out there, whether it's four or five miles away from an ITD facility, um, our traffic impact to that, that intersection is seven percent of, of, of our numbers, if you will. The, the difficulty and the, the real challenge ends up being is that generally, a lot of these have to do with purchasing additional right-of-way to make that happen. So that's why you kinda need to be bankrolling like a, like an impact fee would be for those kind of things, to allow them, that money to then be used when ITD folks are doing the project. Um, to, to burden one with, with an entire improvement that is such a minor portion of their project is where that, that challenge and difficulty comes. Um, we did one recently in Star, and we were six or seven miles away. Star did put into play, so we donated some money, put money in for that, um, and it was three thousand dollars was our impact, and wasn't... And it was $3,000 was our impact and wasn't really pretty close to less than the 7%. That being the dollar amount that's involved. ITD does improvements. Those things take place and they go with the multi-ification, finding the right-of-way. That's a big portion.
Hold on, me and I didn't ask. I just was a...
That's Lance Cornell.
Oh, this is Lance Cornell?
I don't think he realizes. I unmuted him during...
Oh.
I think he wants to speak.
He's now, it looks like he's dropped off.
Yeah. I'd like to add, if I could...
I apologize for that.
No, that's quite all right. I understand. Real learning how to do this. About ITD study on page two, and I've just spoken to the developer. And as Kent said, our traffic is 7% of the traffic at that intersection where the right turn lane would be needed. They calculated what our share contribution would be, and I'm reading off the letter that they wrote to us, $13,463. And so the developer would be willing to contribute that, but there, as Commissioner Van Beek says, we do not have that tool in our tool belt, in our toolbox, to collect that money to use for that reason. So as some of the jurisdictions have been doing. But that is the extent of the amount of money that we would contribute for the 7%. So it just, it just kind of is same as Kent said. It's a percentage of the issue at that intersection, but there seems like there might be already some issues there.
Thank you for that.
Okay, Mr. Brown?
There were a number of discussions about Castleton, which is the development to the north of us, and that access to the south. Mr. Thuisen did try to purchase the same piece of property, but was unwilling because the price was higher. Table Meadows, that is touching our southeast corner that Chad actually lives in. That development is the one that drug the sewer through that piece of property. I spoke with that developer. And he couldn't, that's the price that they were asking for it because, you know, even though he wanted to continue and do more, and he would put in an improvement on someone else's property, and so he tried to recoup that. That additional cost, and then you take the, this property is being sold at a much different time than those other two developments. Castleton was done in a time when we're coming out of the recession and there was a need to kind of stimulate some growth and the prices were a lot lower. Well, now the prices are a lot higher and so that has taken place. So even though they wanted to maybe develop on this piece of property, it wasn't affordable at that time. But it's kind of been acknowledged that it's there. And by stubbing the street, they're doing a little spike strip that Jennifer showed you in her commentary that was owned by Mr. Thuisen. We purchased that from him. We own that, if you will, little spike strip, that lot that was in that development, so that gives us access. And even though the CCNRs might speak to that, the road system is owned by the Napa Highway District and it's not private roads, they're public roads, just like there'll be in our development. And so we'll make that connection. So I don't know what else needs to be said about that.
Ben Chair, I have a question. Mr. Collins raised a point that the variance that was granted from Castleton going south into your subdivision is seven feet narrower. So talk about why you applied for a variance. What was the impetus behind that?
That was for the lot size.
Or the, I'm sorry, okay.
For the lot size.
Thank you for the clarification. I thought you meant, or misunderstood.
Yeah, the road is going to be the same.
Okay.
Asphalt width. But the biggest difference is if you're looking at an area, they have a tashwalk. We're going to have de-tashwalks in tree-lined streets.
And you...
And trying to put traffic calming when they first enter our development and then partway down the block, another one to try to curve. Yes, you got a long straight road, people are going to drive fast. They're going to drive faster on one that is a lot like the existing in Castleton. I'm sure the neighborhood could approach the Napa Highway District and they could ask them about putting traffic calming things within their own development. It ends up being, you know, do you put a speed bump? Do you go in and put a choker like what we're doing or put an island in? What the biggest difference is, and if you can really look at the visual difference, is by, that road surface looks smaller when you've got a tree-lined street. And so we've tried to really control that, what we have the ability to control. We don't have, we don't have the ability to control everything else in the world, but we can control what's going on.
I think that opening there, Mr. Brown, is that, is that more for connectivity? It's more than creating an arterial or, excuse me, an arterial or something. That's connectivity. And with emergencies and, you know, it being, being out kind of rural like that and the connectivity, actually, I lived in a subdivision that was like that. And the connectivity makes it very nice. It makes it very nice if you're a walker, if you're a biker, you walk your pets, things like that. The connectivity is very nice. And it doesn't, it does not become, I lived for, what, 21 years? And it did not become an arterial. It just, it, the, and I'm not sure, it might have been, the lots where I lived were, you know, a little bit larger, but the connectivity, I always appreciated that. So I think that's a positive thing that can be found in that. And are you going to put connectivity in there? Is that why you purchased, the developers purchased this area for connectivity?
To create that link. There was a discussion by, it was either, I think it was Charles or Zach that talked about the school that's across the street. We're proposing sidewalk on Sunny Ridge and on Lewis that's adjacent to our site, the entire thing, that hopefully makes that a lot more safe than what's existing. One of the neighbors approached me at the neighborhood meeting that, you know, they have track and people run along there. They understood that we were putting in a brush, but they were concerned, you know, well, where are these kids going to be? Because they run up and down the street and nowhere else out there is there any sidewalks. And so we'll have sidewalks in front of ours, so there is safety there. I think, can't remember Fred's last name, but he spoke and talked about we're increasing the safety by being one of the first places to have sidewalks on those more busy or roads.
Deposed.
Lot sizes came up numerous times. I think we've talked about that over and over again.
The internal irrigation?
Irrigation, we're required by state law to extend ditches through our site. If they serve our site and only serve our site, yes, those ditches go away. I remember Mary from our meeting, and she had asked me about that. And it's good to get it on the record, but if she's getting her irrigation water from it, we're required to bring that through. That's something that our engineers are required to do.
Your Napa Meridian irrigation, according, that would work. Okay.
Yeah, that'd be correct.
Um, let's see, I want to see, make sure that if there was anything more. So you've got the chokers for traffic. I didn't know about the sidewalks on Sunny Ridge.
That makes a huge difference, really. I mean...
I don't know. That might be the only sidewalk on Lewis, I think.
Well, it might be there. There's, I can't remember if there's any right in front of the school. I couldn't tell from the area. Table Meadows maybe has 25 or 30 feet. Castleton on Ruth has just a couple of, you know, they only make a short distance out there, and then there's the LDS Church, and there's sidewalk there. So there's an improvement on Ruth, but there isn't anything on Sunny Ridge or on Lewis that are on our side of the street.
Yeah, and there's no sidewalks in front of schools either.
And the development to the east of us being five acres, you know, they have a long dead-end street that goes in there and obviously those improvements weren't put in there. Fuji, that you said you were familiar with, it's on the west side of us. They don't have any sidewalk on Sunny Ridge. They don't have any sidewalk on the interior. I live across the street from St. Luke's Meridian. I'm on a half an acre. I understand when I look at the public right-of-way that I, seven feet of my yard is public right-of-way. My wife takes care of it and mows it for them and plants flowers in it and different things. Fuji is a lot the same way, and a lot of what they view as their yard is in the public right-of-way and is there if they do, I mean, Napa Highway District really is interested in pedestrian travel. So they don't, they don't require that. They're not really interested in it. As a developer, we're interested in it. And view that that's probably the most usable open space that we're going to have in our development. And from the hundreds of subdivisions that I've done over the last 30 years of doing this job, it's really interesting is that that's the one that gets used. I mean, it's almost like you, you kind of drive your car around and you go, okay, if I make one lap, that is a third of a mile or whatever. And so then they know, you know, now you've got fancy watches and everything else that tells you how many steps you're making. But realistically, people use that to exercise. And if we can make that prettier by having that tree-lined street, then that's really usable open space in a rural area or more rural area than us putting a little park in there that... The yards, you know, people aren't sending their kids to go play totloos. We put really nice totloos in a lot of the developments we do. You drive by and you don't see them, but when Costco's got a sale or Lifetime has a sale, I got really nice playground equipment and my grandkids don't live anywhere near me. And I've never been on that fleet yet, but I've got it in my yard because I got a bigger backyard. That's what takes place because we have a lot of depth, just like the Castle. I think I've answered everything unless there's something on your list.
Ben Chair?
Yes.
I have a question. On Castleton Avenue, which is that public that runs north and south?
Yes, ma'am.
You've got a quarter of a mile of straight stretch there that extends, and we can't see what happens in Castleton and I'm not...
It's a straight stretch all the way through.
So another quarter of a mile, longer, shorter? North is... And we connect on the left side right there?
So we're connecting right here.
Uh-huh.
And then there's a straight up and this is route.
Okay. So is it, probably is somewhere, is that a quarter of a mile?
Yeah.
So it's a half mile of straight stretcher road, which understandably is concerning. You get straight stretch, you get high density, you get kids and cars and it's a recipe. So I want to go back to what I heard was good faith, that even though these lots are smaller, there is intentionality in your plan to have the homes be consistent with what's, I don't want to put words in your mouth, I want to hear what you have to say because I, I look at the size of the Fuji subdivision, I look at the size of the five acres on this other subdivision, and I think that would look odd. Because if you picked up these little blocks, you could almost fit six of them in one lot to the west.
So it's kind of interesting. I started out, for me, I worked for the city of Boise for nine years on the planning side and actually worked with some of your staff while I was there. And you, you, you look at what takes place. And we've had this historical part that really takes place with development is that the first thing that ends up going in, in rural agricultural areas is farmer wants to get his son and his daughter a place and they're allowed to carve off an acre and they do a split that way. Then you might have a certain area and a farmer wants to make a little bit of money and he does a development, we'll say, similar to the development that's to the east of us that's on five acres. Who determines that size? Will the county determine that at that time, development could take place and that there was enough room for a well-inseptic on five acres? They require, the health department requires that there be some testing so that there's not the salt or there's not any other issues that allow that well-inseptic. Then time goes on, Fuji comes around and they, there's still this desire to maybe have some development, but they said they can do it on less than that and do a well-inseptic. That's how your code is basically written to allow you to do that. And so they go in and they build on something smaller and some are bigger and some are not. They, they meet the requirement because of well-inseptic at that time. Now, when sewer's available, Castleton comes in and they exceed the 12,000. They're realistically coming in at a time when no one's willing to build. There is, because we've gone through the recession and there's a desire to entice people to get out there. This same thing is taking place in, throughout the county and throughout Ada County, is you see larger pieces of ground when you're trying to entice people to move from their existing subdivision to something else. Whether they use it or not, I mean, one acre is probably one of the worst land divisions that you can create. You're not big enough to really feed a horse. You might be able to, if you do a lot of feeding, you can do cattle. I lived on an acre growing up as a kid and most of it was bare because the horses ate everything, including the fences.
Yes. I can justify that.
So it's not a really great land division. Patricia and I had this discussion earlier about, you know, two acres, is there any greater value in a two acre versus an acre? There really isn't because most of the time it's in weeds, you know? But my neighborhood is tied to a part that is one acre. And there's a few people that treat it like lawn, they take care of it. When it was originally done, people had some horses and stuff, but there's nobody doing horses anymore. There might be a lot of chickens. We're seeing a lot of chickens in neighborhoods anymore, whether that's what, whatever size it is. But now that we've been in the impact area for 20 years and the minimum is 12, and the developer that did the Table Meadows, you know, when I talked with him, their lots are a little bit bigger. Well, his house product that he liked to do was the ones with those big RV garages. I had this discussion in both neighborhood meetings with the neighbors, was the owner of Trilogy does not like those big additions to the house front. He just doesn't think that that looks very nice. And that becomes a feature of those homes, most of the homes have those big RV garages. We like what is at Castleton a lot better. We've tried to kind of duplicate that, but yes, we're just a little bit smaller. But I think that that, you know, it's a long story to get there, but that's, that's how development takes place and when the land prices are at all-time highs, I mean, I had a couple of neighbors sell their houses... I, I had a couple of neighbors sell their houses recently and I just, I couldn't believe that our old landlord wasn't that much money.
Right. Well, we have no one else signed up to speak and if there are no more questions for Kent?
Yeah, and, and I don't know if Patricia can answer this or Jennifer or, or maybe Kent, but you know, I look at, I'm looking at the aerial and I don't know if we can get an aerial, a really good aerial of that, um, there that's a little bit bigger than what you have. Well, that kind of shows that they're, uh...
Commissioner Dale, I'm going to try to pull up, uh, one of the exhibits in your packet, which would be exhibit five. Um, and see if that gets you to where you need to be.
Yeah, that, that, if you could do that one, that would help. Well, I'm looking at the aerial on my, on my iPad.
Trying to get this one to pull up here.
Yeah.
So exhibit five in your packet, um...
It shows this, this small air photo there, uh, one mile.
Yeah. It's not showing up on my screen for some reason, so I apologize that I'm flipping through all of these. Let me try and reload the staff report.
Well, while you're doing that, uh, and if we can get that visual, I think that's helpful. Um, but the only comment I was gonna, gonna make, and I don't know if we have this in any, any kind of statistical, um, database, but there, there appears to me to be a lot of lots in this general area that would be around that twelve thousand foot, uh, square foot acreage. Um, and I'm, I'm just wondering if you've got any verification of that. I mean, I'm looking, oh, even going over towards, uh, Highway forty-five, twelfth Avenue, there, there, there's some really kind of hodgepodge, uh, things put over there, but...
There's some, there's some to the north, up closer to the elementary school.
Yeah, there's a bunch up that way.
Those are in the twelve thousand, I, and I think that, that the neighbors were concerned because those houses are a little smaller.
Yeah.
Even some of the homes that are in the Fuji development would not meet the requirements that we're willing and wanting to put on our, on our project.
Yeah.
We're asking for a larger...
Right. And, and just my point is, is that, you know, there, there are a lot of lots in this general area. It, it, most immediately is the Castleton right immediately, adjacent to the north. That, 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 that's kind of good, but it's kind of, all those, all those little, uh, signs kind of cover up, there you go. Yeah. And can you make that a little bit smaller so you get a little broader area? Yeah, more like that, yeah. You can see there's a lot of residential development out in that area. Anyway, I think that kind of just shows what I was looking at here. Yeah, Patricia?
Madam Chair, I was gonna direct your attention to the thirteen, in the rezone. And that's kind of, it doesn't, it shows what lots are less than an acre, I think. I'm just trying to bring that out, but it's, uh...
The red are less than an acre.
Yeah. Down with the budget.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because you see a, you see a, a broader perspective of...
Right. So, so that's just what I was trying to see, is just a bigger picture, see what's happening here. One of the things we're, we're asked to do is, is take the long-term view of this and get the big picture. And that, that's what I was trying to do, is get that thirty thousand square, thirty thousand foot elevation picture.
So we have no one else signed up to speak?
You want a motion?
Ma'am Chair, before that, I had asked two questions for Jennifer. Jennifer, do you have any information on the net lot size for Castleton and then the total acreage for that development? And then Mr. Brown, I have, or maybe you do or don't know, but that Fletcher Drive up there by Sunny Ridge, I was through there this summer and it looks like that would be about the same lot size. Trish, I don't know if you can see that on that aerial that we just looked at.
Where's that at?
Um, Commissioner Dale, that's exhibit thirteen.
Okay, where, where is that Fletcher?
Um, that's up northwest.
Chover Drive and Lucas.
Okay.
Yes.
Oh, see Fletcher Drive there? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes. So I didn't, I'm sorry, Trish.
Really less than an acre, but that's all I have on the...
Oh, okay. Okay, so right under an acre there. It's hard to tell from these what that looks like.
Commissioner Van Beek?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I do have that information that you requested on Castleton. Um, so the information that was in the staff report was correct. I just wanted to verify that I had the average correct. So Castleton is forty-five residential lots. Um, the approximate acreage of the parcel when it's developed was twenty-three acres. So the average lot size is point five one acres. Um, I also did share with you a copy of the Castleton Place subdivision plat and for the record, uh, that will be exhibit seventy-four. So Castleton Place shows, um, the lots that are, but the subject property as, as being comparable in size to what's being proposed. There are some larger lots within the subdivision, um, which contribute to that average of point five one acres. So hopefully, hopefully that helps.
And that's net growth. Yes, it does. Thank you. I appreciate you ferreting that out. And that point five one is net work growth.
It's net, so that, that excludes roads and common lots. So that average is just for the residential.
Okay. Thank you for the information.
You're welcome.
Any more questions?
No, I'm good. Ma'am Chair, I'll make a motion and we close public comments.
Seconded, moved and seconded to close public comments, all favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Madam Chair, I'll just make a few comments. I, I, I understand the difficulty of people who live in the area who are hesitant to be in favor of any kind of a large change like this because, because you've had a nice open field around you for a long time. I, I remember, uh, very well the same situation, situation I was in a few years ago, or not a lot of nice open space and the pheasants would fly through there and land and we don't hardly even see pheasants out, south anymore. They're disappearing and breed. Um, and the subdivision was proposed and man I opposed it, everything I, I was worked, but you know, it, it was in the urban growth area and it was a natural piece of growth. Um, this is not yet in city limits and, and there's a lot of space in between city limits and this property, so I don't know if that actual, uh, inclusion in the city limits will occur in any time soon, just because there's so much ground in between. But they, they do have, there is water and sewer from the city available. If this was to go into the city limits at some point, if, if, if this is denied and it, and it wakes and wakes and wakes, you could have, you could have four lots, you could have eight thousand square foot lots. In, in fact, you could even go lower than that. You could go six thousand square foot lots, I think, is the minimum in the city of Napa. Um, they probably wouldn't allow that here, but that is a potential. Um, I, I think the water and sewer being there tells us that in the planning stages of the city of Napa, as they took water out through this area to serve Liberty Charter and then Victory Charter and then the subdivisions that have grown up around that, this is anticipated to be an area of, of not rural type subdivision, but more, more, um, buffering type in between the rural and the urban subdivision. I, I think this is, it, it, it doesn't qualify necessarily as, as urban, but it is medium density. It's certainly not rural, but it's kind of a buffer between that. So I, I think there's been a lot of good work done on this. I, I believe that this will eventually, um, be a good, good development and if it, if it develops in a manner that has been stipulated here. There's some good talks have been put into that. I like the sidewalks, I like the, the bump outs and it was mentioned down here that there is like about a half a mile of straight street, but we did, did this study back in Napa several years ago and there's a couple of subdivisions going in there and they put those bump outs in there to provide visual narrowing and visual obstacles to the sightline. And those have been proven statistically and through studies, traffic, people who study these things, that they, they provide a natural calming effect on the traffic that goes through there. The trees as well, I think, will do that same sort of thing. But the bump outs do a tremendous, um, amount of that natural calming. So, Madam Chair, those are my comments. I, I appreciate the folks who testified, um, and, and, and as I sit here today, I am, I am in the favor of, of this subdivision.
Commissioner Van Beek? Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to say first, I am not necessarily in favor of the density. What I am in favor of is a proactive developer that tries to mitigate some of the concerns that have been raised by people that, um, provide input for the board on, we do represent the people. So, um, I guess I will provide some input as Commissioner Dale has done, that I live on a farm, I own eighty acres, I had a proposal that would have taken our quiet road from fifteen cars a day to fifteen thousand and we opposed it with a lot of vigor and it did not go through. What I'd like is that there is a voluntary agreement to provide a minimum square footage of a house. That caters to a different group of people than, um, you know, that minimum square footage is going to require that a certain dollar amount. I like the stones, I like the detached sidewalks, I like that there's a voluntary landscape plan. In the absence of that, I would not vote for this, but I get to look at the findings of facts and conclusions of law and order and what's been provided from our comprehensive plan on development. And Mr. Brown's point is well taken, that before any of us came into this room, there was, was in the area of impact and there was a designation of medium density for that. We had a proposal last week where in an area of impact, they wanted to put forty units to the acre. That would be a significant change for this. So this seems to have some components, I would, as a commissioner, want there to be voluntary compliance and some agreement, um, if there's a motion that's made to approve this where it was not a poor quality subsidized housing. I think that the fear I hear is that because there's a smaller lot size, that it's going to attract a buyer that requires subsidized housing, needs a higher call out for public services. I don't necessarily know, but again, in the absence of the unknown, we assume things that may or may not be true. We don't know. Um, I am interested in what the chair's thoughts are on this. I, I have mixed feelings on the pros and the cons. I, again, it's not because I like the density, it's because I like the, the presentation on the part of people coming on how they've laid this out and their willingness to help alleviate some of the fears for the people living in that area and help provide answers to the board in crafting a decision.
I think as the, uh, the, the county grows closer and closer to the city limits in places that, um, it's kind of, you, you kind of have different sizes and there's a little bit of buffering that goes on with some of the, uh, developments that come in place and that sort of thing. What I'm impressed with and I don't, um, it's on the record that, that applicant's representative put it on the record that there's going to be tree-lined streets and that there is detached sidewalks. And then, um, Mr. DePold, I was very impressed with the fact that there's two-point-eight miles of sidewalk and, um, that, you know, I, I like the connectivity of it because it's, you're out, but there is such a, a community feeling when, when subdivisions, when there's a connectivity. They don't, none of you in this room or the people that I heard don't, I don't see you as being a neighbor that would, um, race around, although you're, you know, I understand the concern. It's, it's the unknown when you don't know. But so much of this has been put on the record today of what we can expect out of this development, out of this subdivision, what we expect. And we expect that, um, the developer put his trust in Mr. Brown to present to us what is going to be there. And, um, uh, I think that what I heard was this is going to be a community for, um, old people like me or it'll be a community for young families that kids are just now in, you know, transitioning maybe to middle school or it can be in, anywhere, people that have, a lot of people have, have gone to simple apartment and stuff like that, you know? Now apartments are three and four bedrooms. I just can't even picture that, but you know, and then, but this is going to be, um, this is going to be a sense of community is what, as I look at it. And I look at the ones that are around it and the location and the lake and, and where this is and, um, it's, it's still, you're still going to be able to, once you drive, you know, you're going to see wide open fields. There's still some crops out there and there are still places that have five acres and different things like that. And, um, but we have on record what we can expect and I'm expecting, um, I'm expecting nice designs. I'm not expecting cookie cutter houses. I'm expecting, funny about it, everyone talks about curb gutter and sidewalk, I want rain gutters and chains or downspouts. That's what I want to see on a house and so many of them, they come in and they slap these things in there, you know, a couple thousand at a time and there's not a drain, a drain, a spout or a gutter, rain gutter to be seen. All those kinds of things are things that, that you can put chains there. I mean, there are things that will dress these houses up and the stone and, and that sort of a thing. And I think the way things are selling now, people are buying before complete and you're going to customize houses out when you have a place that's out like this, I'll tell you what. I just don't, please, I don't want any of it in the paper and everything because we're, then they're, they're leaving by trains, buses and airplanes and truckloads to come to this valley and, um, we'll, we'll just, we'll keep it. I mean, Castleton is beautiful and we'll keep it beautiful in this area. And I know what I'm expecting, so whoever you're, the builders or, and the developers is at Trilogy, the developers, don't let me down because I've got you on record.
Madam Chair, I appreciate your comments and the passion that you've delivered those in. I have a question because we're incorporating some of the joint power agreements between the city and county. So for the sidewalks, are there any street lights proposed? I don't know if I heard that in here, but if you're talking about community, as we're talking about walking paths, as we're talking about what makes it safe and a place to have that, you know, that's a feature that if you have two-point-eight miles of walking in the county, it could be seen as an amenity if that's incorporated later for the city of Napa.
Madam Chair, uh, uh, Commissioner Van Beek, I'm seeing some heads nodding out there that there will be street lights. The Napa standard. Yeah, and so, so it's, it's not a joint power agreement necessarily, but it is, it is that the Napa, uh, Napa City get to make recommendations for what they want to see and, and apparently it's Napa street standards and that's the sidewalk, street lights and all that.
The county has adopted Napa standards, the one's right, yes.
Yeah.
In the, through the area of the city of Napa.
Okay, so that would be part of that.
That was a good question.
That was a good question.
Okay, and then, um, Trish? I just don't want clarification from people on the record. So I've heard what they're willing to do and then how, what's the follow-through? And Madam Chair, I want to say I appreciate all your comments and Commissioner Dale with the work and that's your stopping grounds for the city of Napa, but, um, I think I object probably more to the sentiment of what some of the, the builders are included with the Trilogy, that flavor of development and I've heard poor feedback on some of those. I think that intimidates people and causes them to question what that will look like because it's a, it's a lower standard. I'm just going to say it that way without naming names. And so, Trish, how do we get, even though there's a big box out there on Midway, that it's got to be in excess of ten thousand square feet, but it doesn't guarantee quality? So how do we get that? So how do we get that, what's that look like?
Madam Chair, Tricia Van Beek, the only way to do that is to, um, adoption of, of design review standards, having a design review board simply in the city, not at the county. But that's the only way to affect architecture and, um, kind of external elements of a building.
And holding them to the minimum square footage, do they perhaps?
How size, there is not a public purpose in that, and jurisdictions can run afoul of the Federal Fair Housing Act, um, established, it's been found to be patently discriminatory and, uh, lower income. There's really a public purpose for a minimum house size.
Okay, and so with that being a part of their presentation, then, and that's an inducement for this board, so how does that follow-through happen?
That's just a statement on the record, and they're saying what their private agreement will have in it, but it's not something that we can be involved with or conditioned.
And I would say, living in a subdivision that has stuff like that, it's, it's in the CCNRs, and, and the, uh, if, if, if they set up the CCNRs correctly, well, who's to know what's correct? But if they set it up in a certain way, there's a design standard that goes for a review to the CCNR board, whoever that is. And they, I know, that subdivision I live in is Rain Tree, and they're pretty strict. Um, they even go to the, they even make determinations on the color of your house if you're gonna repaint it. And the shingles, if you're gonna reshingle, and all that kind of stuff. And that's, that, that's in the CCNRs, that's a private thing. In the subdivision, it's not something that is governed, or, 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 or ma, what's the word? They, they don't, they don't, yeah, they don't, they don't, the, the city or the county does not enforce those. That's, that's between the, the subdivision and the people who buy within there. And by buying within that subdivision, they are agreeing to abide by the CCNRs within that subdivision. So that's what I feel.
Thank you for that information, that's good information for the record. So was the board providing with a copy of the proposed CCNRs that would...
Yeah, Madam Chair, I think that is not a typical, typical requirement.
Okay, and I guess I'm, I'm just, we have to wait testimony with what we heard, and against what we hope to see. And so I'm just asking the question.
No, you do, there, there are some times we do ask for a copy before the final plat. If, if, um, evidence of a condition that's been required, typically, for, you know, maintenance of open space or something, is, uh, evidence that they comply with a condition of, of approval. But, uh, in this case, I don't think we would need the CCNRs for any of the conditions. Jennifer, if I'm correct, if I'm wrong, but, um, it's infrequent that we would, um, uh, get a copy of the CCNRs.
And so, then that leaves it just to the testimony of the applicant, that they'll follow through with what we've been presented with.
Right, but it's not part of the decision, in like the minimum house size, or, um...
Yeah, we, unfortunately, they don't, they don't really like us to spend the developer's money, but we really, a lot of times, take our liberties with that, and it's kind of easy for us to sit here and spend their money. But, um, but you presented, we've got pictures in this packet, it's public record, and, um, and, um, Commissioner Van Beek, you say hope, and I say expect. There you go.
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Okay.
If this goes through and is approved, can the board have the option to look at the CCNRs before signing the final plat? And have that meet what was provided as testimony for it?
I'm not sure why that would be.
Yeah, I don't wish to do that.
It's not part of the decision making.
We, we don't.
Yeah.
And I understand, I guess I'm just...
You can really set a precedent that, that this board...
That would come the expectation that we would enforce all this, and we, that's, we don't, that's off, we don't need that.
That's beyond the scope of this board.
Yeah, so, that, yeah, so, but I think they understand that we're serious about this. So, okay, yes, they're both shaking their head, so, um, I'm ready for a motion. Okay, I'll make it. I will make a motion that, um, we approve the rezone request by Jax Place LLC. I, um, and that we also, um, you want to do them separately?
Yeah, we just make the motion on the rezone, so we didn't find the ordinance for the rezone.
Okay.
And then subsequently, a motion, um, on the...
So there is not, we don't need one, right now?
We do.
Or we do, but after we do this, just...
Yeah, we need the rezones determined first.
Okay, so then I, I make the motion that we approve the rezone from, to, R, R, to R1, or Jax Place LLC, Jax Place subdivision. Moved and seconded, all in favor, let's have a roll call vote, please. Commissioner Van Beek?
Um, no.
Tricia White?
Yes.
Commissioner Dale?
Yes. Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we, uh, also, uh, sign the ordinance, and the findings of fact, inclusion of law and order, and that, Trish, that says the plat there after the law and order.
For the rezone.
Yeah, the ordinance for the rezone, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Findings and ordinance for the rezone.
Okay, it's a little bit confusing the way this is listed here today.
Yeah, it's okay.
That's our agenda, it's different than what staff has in the, in the packet.
In the packet.
Okay.
But, uh, uh...
So the mo- the motions that I'm trying to make is to approve the findings of fact, inclusion of law and order for the ordinance.
Yeah, change the...
Change the, yes, and that's all seconded.
Yeah.
Okay, moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
And then, Trish, for me to, uh...
Jennifer's got the, for the plat, it's the proposed findings of fact, inclusion of law, uh, to approve the plat irrigation drainage plan.
Preliminary?
Yes, preliminary plat, irrigation drainage.
Okay, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the preliminary plat finding, and also sign the conclusions of law, uh, and order for that, is that correct, Tricia?
Yeah, that'll just on the record to approve the irrigation drainage.
And irrigation, irrigation drainage plan, yes.
Okay, I'll second that. Moved and seconded to approve that discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Okay, very good. Anything that we, uh, need to do further, Trish?
No, the Jennifer's provided a document on the first amendment.
Okay, very good. I wish to thank all of the people, those of you that are here in person, those of you that have joined us by WebEx to express your, um, concerns, and, um, have handled this in, in such a orderly, polite way. Thank you all very, very much. Um, and Merry Christmas, thank you, that will conclude this.